...on television and cable news. This teacher, who received endorsement allowance to teach, who receives special teaching allowances, did not know the difference between wine and I. When I ask her, "No, don't make noise, it's not something to celebrate." If you clap for what is wrong, what will you do for what is right? This is not a clap essential, please. I ask her to read the affidavit. Instead of "I solemnly declare", she said, and I quote,[46.40][47.60]"One so solemnly..." She didn't know the difference between "I" and "one", she didn't know the difference between "solemnly declare" and "solemnly declare". She went on to talk about the affidavit, this one to Adunicha Prophet. "Adunicha Prophet", she meant to say, "Prophet", but even the word "Adunicha" was not in the affidavit. But I suspect that is where the affidavit was forged. She says "Adunicha Prophet", and I said, "There's no Adunicha, read what is here, no word is in your head", and she insisted, "Adunicha Prophet", she didn't know the difference between registered and registered. She talked about being registered, the affidavit was registered. We can go on and on and on. Simple, this lady could not read. And if she cannot read, you don't need expert to tell you that she cannot write. And yet, a market woman at Oba Market, in rushing to the market in the morning, they will start to drop their child in a primary school where that lady is teaching, or where she was teaching. And at about 2 o'clock, she will rush back to the school to pick the child, quote from school, having been taught by a teacher from Adunicha Prophet. And she will do that for the next six years. And at the end of her six-year primary school degree certificate, she cannot spell mama's name. Across the country, people talking about the fact that we have graduates who can't read, who can't write. Graduates that are not employed. This is the foundation. When I arrived in this state five days ago, Edo had become notorious for what they call miracle centers. What is a miracle center? A miracle center is where people who are conscious of the fact that they can't pass WAE examination or NECO examination, they found criminals who set up exam wonder centers, where they pay the prescribed bribe, what they can afford it, how many parents who want their children to go to universities, how black men to raise the money to support their children, to pay to see for examinations in these wonder centers, what they pay the prescribed charges, which is shared vertically and horizontally all the way to WAE headquarters. They are sure of making as many days as they paid for. And I think it's as a result of this that the university found that they no longer rely on WAE certificates. And they now insist on conducting what they now call post-UEB. But look at how all of these things have affected our environment. Because the child was not taught in school, and the parents insisted that he must go to university, and the child also want to go to university. They want to be doctors, they want to be engineers, they want to be pharmacists, they want to be architects, you name it. But he must pass mathematics, physics, English, etc., etc. And so miracle to the rescue. Now, going through this miracle, they get admission to university. They found that actually how far the miracle can take them. They now find themselves in a lecture hall, and the lecturer has believed he has post-secondary school undergrad to teach. And like the story of the hip, po-po-po-po-po-po tables, they are just there wondering what the teacher is teaching, because they can't follow. And because they can't follow, many result to seeking protection. The end of the secret code. Because they want to be protected, they want to pass. They want to make deal with the teacher or intimidate the teacher. And so what then has led to the other? Today, I'm told, in some of our secondary schools and even primary schools, even our security agents are reporting to me that cortisone, that our primary school pupils are into cortisone. Secondary school pupils. And everybody turning the other way. We cannot have future as a state, certainly no future as a country, if we choose to turn the other way. And the way we have demonstrated as a lead is to say, "Okay, if that secondary school, they say the pupils are into cortisone, thank God, I take my own to that I prefer private school, where cortisone are not welcome." So individual find individual solution. The result is that we have all abandoned public education. But look at the paradox. Those who have free resources can suddenly send their children overseas. Those who are not very rich can send them to Ghana. Couple of weeks ago, I read huge figures about the amount of money Nigerians are spending to send their children to Ghana. This Ghana must go means now our young ones, we must go Ghana. And they sent those special universities that target Nigerians who are seeking quality education. So everybody is seeking individual escape route. What is the responsibility of government? Even government official, we all have to take our children to escape. Then the poor are trapped. And let's face it, it is bad enough to have huge number of young people who are unemployed. But it is simple what to find that these millions of people who are unemployed are not even employed. Like I said earlier, you don't need to be a sociologist to recognize the fact that there can be no upward mobility for the poor if they do not have access to basic education. And without education, all happens is a laborer give birth to another laborer. A dog give birth to another dog. A dog give birth to another dog. In no time, you end up with the dynasty of the poor. Because the poor keep reproducing the poor. Why few and few people are able to bear out because the corner resources that they can send their children out of the system. I've tried to engage the AUT in the light of what we have seen, namely that we have pupils who can, I mean the teachers who cannot read and write. And I said, "We have to deal with it, because that is the responsibility of government." How do we deal with it? How do I separate the Adunicha Prophet from the Adunicha teacher? What mechanisms exist for me, for us as government to try to identify genuine, worthy and qualified teachers from those we can categorize as quacks? At the first meeting, and this was last year, the teachers agreed at our instance that we should organize the competency test, which some other governments in some other states have carried out. Their only reservation was that the test should not be used to ridicule the teachers. And that we should ensure that this test is not covered by televisions or review or by the mass media. We agreed. I don't think that left for me, this should be our state's secret. It is not something that I want to celebrate as the governor of industry that my, some of our teachers can't teach. I like it saying, as I've had to say during May Day, that our teachers are the best, only to find that we have some of them who are, who can't read or write. So we agreed that we don't need their coverage. We went on to fix it. And the AUT decided to invite their members not to attend. We subsequently invited them for a meeting. And after lengthy conversation and dialogue along with the NRC and the TUC, they said, "Okay, they need their time to educate and to sensitize their members." In fact, with that education, they requested that the commissioner for education should join them to go and address their members at teachers' house. And I said, "No, you have your meeting in full freedom." I don't want anyone to argue that they were intimidated by the presence of government officials. As a union man myself, when workers want to hold their meeting, they don't want quote-unquote "management agent" to be present. So you hold your meeting. But apparently, the AUT leadership went there completely to mislead their members. When they told us they want time to sensitize their members, they went to the meeting and told their members that we have agreed to abolish or not to do the competency test. Whereas the deal was to give them more time. We had the third meeting. And we asked why they didn't do the UTO. And they said they needed more time. As a matter of fact, some of them said they have more information than we have. That if we give them more time, they will share those information with us. They went on to, for me, that previous governments contributed to this problem by, you know, dumping their political associates as teachers. And that many of them were never trained teachers. They were not dumped in the system by politicians. And I said, "Fine. Whatever led to it, the good news is that we are now ready to deal with the matter." So the more they use to partner with us, so that we can get in it of the quacks. After, the MBA, sorry, the Medical Association, they also suggested to us that we should assist them to assure that people are not qualified doctors, are not allowed to bury themselves as one or even practice medicine, whether in government or in private clinics, because they do damage to the image of the medical profession. So you should do the same. When they pleaded for more time, again, we announced we postponed the date, we rescheduled, and allowed them more time to work consult. That is how we have shifted this exam, I believe, up to four times. Two or three weeks ago, I had meeting with Christian Association of Nigeria, their leadership, and I shared with them what issues were. I have also invited the NGOs and civil society group, and myself being a civil society activist, to share with them what issues were with regards to competency test. They've gone to meet with the teachers. And to my surprise, they came back a few days last week, I believe Friday or Thursday, to say that the teachers allege that we have not had any meeting with them. And I said, "Okay, I know we met with them at least four times, but we will not be tired, I'm still ready to hold yet another meeting." And we have slated one for tomorrow. But this time, I've invited the civil society organizations to be present, so that they can hear our teachers and hear us out. Some of the issues they have raised, I'd like to verify. One is that this exercise is a witch hunt exercise. I don't know why anyone want to witch hunt a good teacher. A good teacher is an asset. And even the ones we found included that Adunicha Prophet. As we speak, we have not terminated her, but we have stopped her paying. Why they missed up the pay? We have stopped repaying because of that the civil service rules. If you stay longer, there are 35 years in service or more than 60 years of age, whichever comes first, any amount of time or years you have spent or months, any money paid to you by way of salaries is refundable. You will be obliged to refund it. These rules were not made by me. They are not made by this government. These are rules made and shared across the 36 states of the Federation and even those who are under federal government employment. So if you have cheated by 10 years, it's most likely that you may have some money to refund. And that being so, that being so, we can't continue to pay you. So by November or so, I believe, we stopped their pay. But even so, we have not issued SAC letters. Why we have not done that? Because we think, subject to the outcome of the competency test, some of these teachers, even though they have sworn to force affidavit, they have reduced their age. If they even haven't reduced their age, they will still be under 60. And if there's any of them who is still under 60, he really has not yet cheated, although he has laid foundation for cheating. In that case, all we need to do is to look at it with some, as I say, compassionately, maybe according to swans, to apologize and to sing no more, provided all other things are equal. Namely that you are qualified to teach and that you are not above 60. These I share with the teachers, that we are ready to review those cases. The only one that we can do nothing about are in respect of those who have already exceeded 60 years of age or 35 years of service. But even if you are young, but you were never supposed to be a teacher, because you are not a trained teacher, you were dumped in the school by public authorities, then you may have, we may have difficulties reviewing your case positively. Just to say that, the entire exercise was not meant to sack anybody. If the idea was to sack anybody, we should have since sacked all those 1,300. Even those who obtained primary school certificate 50 years after teaching, we have not sacked them. And even now, we are not rushing to do so, because we want to find out why they did that, so that we can, you know, form opinion on the basis of facts. The other argument is why teachers only? First, it is not only teachers. We have carried out the same verification exercise across the entire public service. The central service, the health sector, doctors, nurses, pharmacists, all those who are employed by the health management board, they've all been verified. I will not have all the numbers. So it is not something limited to teachers. We are possibly carrying out the same verification exercise with regards to senior secondary school teachers. So any suggestion that this is limited to primary school teachers is not true. However, what we found is that those involved in age falsification, they are more among the teachers than you will have in the core civil service. I don't know why, that is the evidence that has come out from this verification exercise. Those with, who have authorization of certificate, the numbers are few in the head sector and in the core civil service, compared to what we have found in in respect of primary school teachers. I understand over the period, the federal government, in consultation with all the states of the Federation, came up with a new policy which says that TC2 should be replaced with a minimum of NCE. This is not a policy formulated by this government. And I believe they have their reasons. And a specific timeframe was allowed for teachers with TC2 to obtain NCE certificates, so that they become qualified. The information I have is that about 625 primary school pupils in Edo State have not been able to obtain NCE certificates. Yet, the period allowed for this policy was 2006. That was the time allowed. So since 2006, as we speak, 2014, it means 80 years down the road, many teachers are in violation of this policy. In our senior secondary schools, the record shows that only 41 teachers that do not have NCE certificates. So it is clear that there are issues with regards to the competence of many of our teachers to teach and to impart knowledge. I've heard some, listening to radio, some suggestions that why should government carry out competency tests on a teacher, a secondary school teacher, for example, who majors in geography and history, and is now being asked to do a competency test in mathematics? As far as I know, that is not the, that is not the idea. If you major in English, you will be examined in English, not in mathematics. And if I'm a mathematics teacher, you will not be subject to competency test on history or Bible knowledge, because that is not your area or specialty. So what is the fear? Nobody, if you are, if you major in, in, in history or in physics or in mathematics or whatever subject, it is on that subject that you will be examined. However, in primary schools, the subject, the core subject in primary schools are basically three or four. English, arithmetic and general knowledge or so. Which is why in primary schools, you have one teacher for a classroom. That will teach us to be qualified to teach those three or four basic subjects. But someone with NCE certificate or even TC2 certificate should be able to pass basic competency tests for arithmetic and language at primary school level. So I do not see what the fear is. Some have said, "We should send them for training", exactly. But which kind of training should we set for teacher if we do not know what their requirements are? The purpose of competency test is to establish your level of competence. If we find that you have the basic qualification, but you are deficient in hard dependency notes, of course, we can arrange the appropriate training and retraining to deal with those deficiencies. But if in truth, you were never a teacher, you didn't even, you didn't even have, you have not obtained a TC2, let alone NCE, or BSC education. You had connection or you had enough money to bribe somebody, either in the the National Basic Education Board or in the Post-Primary Education Board. And because you bribed, they gave you a job to teach, and you are not qualified to teach, there is no way training and retraining can remedy that deficiency. But again, we can never, we won't be able to understand who has owed what, or let this test is done. And I believe that majority of our teachers are qualified. They might just need a little bit of training and retraining. But I also know from my interaction with that lady, who I choose to refer to as the Adunicha Prophet, because she keeps insisting on Adunicha Prophet. Those ones, there is no amount of training and retraining that can cure her deficiencies. Now, people have said to me, you know, we are in politics, elections are coming, this is not the time to, you know, do anything that will make teachers unhappy, you know, teachers are in difficulties and so on and so forth. Of course, I understand that. But for God's sake, why should we seek power? If our purpose is not for the good of society, why should I seek to be the governor of this state? People will not have the liver, the courage to make decisions that are convinced that if we do not take, that we are abrogated tomorrow. There can be no tomorrow if we do not make the right decision today. And the future begins today. I don't want to pass something body, this body, to my successors. I don't want to. But I understand that the conventional politician would just go the other way. Let everybody speak ill of me. But anyone who misuse his office because asking to be elected to govern the state, there are certain minimum irreducible obligations that we are ready to do everything in our power to secure the future of the state. Build new roads, build new schools and build new hospitals. People remind me that I'm a union leader, how can it be my portion? But the truth is, if I was not privileged to attend a primary school in my village, at the time I did, there was no road, there was no light. The only presence of government in my village was what they used to call local authority primary school. I had a teacher that was willing to live with poor villagers. And so I learned how to spell my father's name. I was taught that 2 plus 2 is 4. If I didn't have that, I would not have become the president of Nigerian Labour Government. Because workers do not relate literature to Lydia, who cannot argue their case. So I do not find any contradiction in insisting that if there is conflict between the interest of our children, their right to quality basic education. and retaining a non-qualified teacher, I think we should resolve it in favor of the children. When I was funny, I did say that for us to get changes in N D State, we will need not only to step on toes, that we may have to chop off some toes. Because in truth, if our toe is lepers and we step on it, we might just get contaminated. So it makes sense to chop it off if that is what we want to do to secure tomorrow. This is not the easiest task I want to do. There's no fun in discussing people who I know. About ninety-five percent of them most probably voted for me. But I have said, what did you vote for me for? It is to provide a credible leadership that will secure the future of this state. There's a saying that a politician with narrow mind think of the next election. The state man thinks of the next generation. I think it's a location like this that defines our character. Whether we are just being opportunistic in power or that we seek office because we are clear that we need to begin to do some things differently for Nigeria to change. So your royal highnesses, community leaders, women leaders, party members, market women, and my colleagues, Mr. Speaker and members of the House. I think I am done. Because the whole idea is to allow you sufficient time to interrogate me on all of the issues that I've raised and even the one that I did not remember to raise. So that at the end of the day, I want to be sure that I'm clear as to what you want. I will obey your findings. If you believe that we should stop the competency test and turn the other way, with heavy heart, I will not disobey you. But if you think it is something worth doing, I offer to make this, sacrifice to do it and pay the political cost for so doing. Thank you. On any matter as related to this issue. In brutally frank, no education. And we are telling you what's not any question. I suggest that we start from the side, through our mother. They will move to the, uh, the side like that. We'll have, as much time as possible. Anybody have a, uh, yes, I will be there.
Right now, there was a trained teacher. And because of the trained teacher, cheat us. They cheat, they don't cheat. And I find, yeah, for the second, they hardly are technical teachers these days. Not only if we go to academic classes for eating, we were taught how to make it to the end of the teaching. I don't see anywhere where you do it or do it today. I don't, I've never come for why we start to, to, three teachers. And if you want, if you want to, I don't know why it's done. I don't know when the trained teacher comes, around the gathering. But I hope the trained teacher, they don't cheat. They go for the course themselves. But after this, I went to Nigeria for a part-time teacher, the little. And we teach every subject. Because before you want to be trained, you are supposed to have passed in all these subjects. So this question of, there is somebody going to a separate school, teaching only one subject. And when there's no teacher to train you, you can't, you will be in Nigeria because I don't think it is fair. What is wrong with this new day leader? It isn't justice to be this, or be this.